This is the Bartholomew Town Podcast.
Hi, everyone. Welcome into another edition of the Bartholomew Town Podcast. I'm your host, Bill Bartholomew. On this episode, a conversation with Providence City Council President Sabina Matos. And welcoming the council president back to B-Town for another round of the pod and also welcoming you back after what was hopefully an outstanding 4th of July holiday weekend. Lots going on here in Providence and all around the Ocean State. And of course, that's all interconnected as the council president and I discuss, not the least of which is all of that which occurred in the month of June from the rallies to the budget crisis and of course, the ongoing situation with the pandemic COVID-19. We even touch on the fireworks a little bit that have been not only here in Providence, but really all around the state. We've been getting reports of that. Seems like it's pretty much dialed in in the post 4th of July environment that we now occupy. So a fast-moving, nearly 30 minutes with the council president heading your way in just a matter of moments. And by the way, if you want to support the Bartholomew Town Podcast, there's a few ways that you may do so. One is you can simply leave a review wherever you're listening right now, whether that's Apple Podcasts, Spotify, wherever it may be. You can just click on the star associated with this podcast, as many as you believe we deserve here in B-Town, and that is of great help. You can also contribute to the Bartholomew Town Podcast Patreon account. That will go directly to supporting the journalism, opinion, analysis, and entertainment that B-Town has become known for here in the Ocean State. You also have the opportunity to become a B-Town Insider on the Patreon account. That'll get you exclusive content every month. And for those of you who have already signed up as B-Town Insiders, well, great news. I'll be getting that exclusive content out to you in a matter of days. All right. Without further ado, let's get right to it. Today's conversation with the president of the Providence City Council, Sabina Matos. All right, President, thanks so much for your time. As always, a pleasure to have you here.
Phil, thank you for having me here. It's always good to come and have a conversation with you.
Well, what a month. I mean, here we are. And the previous month was, it was so emotionally charged. It was so, it was just such a real experience. And for me, the, the, the large-scale protest, the 10,000-person protest was probably the most powerful experience I've had since coming back to Rhode Island and one of, just in general, one of the most powerful experiences I've been at. The fact that it was youth-led, it sort of just summed up that, look, we're in a place now where there are issues that, outside of the political aspects of them, just from a, a broader societal aspect, youth and others are just not willing to allow for the status quo to continue.
That is correct. And I would like to say that I was blown away by the, the number of people that show up, but also the level of organizations that that rally had. And it was organized by the youth. And I have to say, I was, um, blown away. I couldn't, I couldn't believe the amount of organization they, they had. So I have to say that, that to me, I was, I was impressed. And I just want to be there and help them to continue to raise their voices and amplify their voices as much as possible. And before we get into all, all this conversation, I also would like to acknowledge a couple of things. First of all, that Black Lives Matters, I believe Black Lives Matters. And then we should continue to talk about that. We should make, we need to make sure that we acknowledge and that Black Lives Matters in every single moment, because we have a lot of fights. We have a lot of isms right now. And if we don't concentrate on this and we start looking at all the other isms, we're going to lose the momentum. So I want to just remind everybody that we have to continue the fight for Black Lives Matters.
Absolutely. And it's so interesting to think about it from that way, because, you know, even I just had Gen Z, we want to live on, on the show earlier this week. And, you know, the conversation veered into, okay, well, climate change, well, you know, health equity, education, and they all tie into Black Lives Matter. There's no question about that in, in one way, shape, or form. But you're right, it is so important from, really from a messaging standpoint, because I think so much of this is bringing in people who are really not evil in any way, shape, or form, but just maybe don't have the life experience to understand the plight of many folks who have, who don't live in the same place as them, frankly, especially here in Rhode Island. So a lot of it's just messaging and staying on point. And that's why I was so disturbed by the looting and everything that took place, because it was like, man, you know, nice job distracting from the messaging and, and the actual cause for really immature experience. Not to say that the anger that's a part of this movement isn't real, but it seemed like that looting incident was coming from a completely different place than the actual movement that's taking place right now.
And as you said, it's just about paying on message. The messaging is Black Lives Matters. If we can fix racism, we're going to fix a lot of other isms, you know? Let's start there. Let's, don't forget that this is a big problem. And if we are able to address this one, we're going to address many other things.
Absolutely. So, all right. So let's, let's talk about Providence specifically. And of course, the saying is, as Providence goes, so too does the state of Rhode Island. I think that that's so true now, not just in an economic context, but in a societal context where Providence is the epicenter of this movement. I've certainly been out in Newport and South County, and there have been impressive events and, and folks, you know, whether they're just standing up on a, on a soapbox on the street corner or actual organized rallies. But as the council president, what's your message right now, I guess, to the rest of the state outside of Providence? For those people who are just watching on the news or whatever and seeing this movement take place predominantly inside the capital city, about what's happening right now and why they should buy into this movement?
So, uh, I like what you said about, uh, as goes Providence goes the rest of the state. I think we need to remind everyone that we are the capital city. A lot of things happen, um, here in Providence. Things are going to be affecting the rest of the state. Just a parenthesis, I normally used to say that as goes only goes Providence, and I go, Providence goes the state. But I was to be a little bit biased. But we have to make sure that the rest of the state understands, once that Providence provides a lot of services for the rest of the state, that if we are not successful in Providence, like a lot of people say, well, we just have, Providence just needs to file for bankruptcy. They're not thinking how that's going to be affecting them in their cities and towns outside of Providence. We are the capital city. So it should be, they should care about what's happening in Providence as equally as what is happening in their neighborhoods. We, right now, are, are being, have been leading this voice for fight for reform, for fight for justice. But what we need right now is to get support from outside of Providence also. We need to have their other voices to be added to our voices to continue to advocate for change. And they cannot forget that if Providence is not successful, the whole state is not going to be successful.
Absolutely. And speaking to the budget, look, when the COVID crisis hit, Mayor Lorsa was pretty clear. I can think back to a day right before the actual shutdown. We were in his office and he was addressing media. And he was really honest in his assessment of saying, look, this, this budget for this year isn't going to look anything like any budget that we've had in the past, and it's not going to be pretty. When you consider the recent Supreme Court of Rhode Island ruling and what it does to reduce the flexibility that you on the council and, and you as president of the council have to, to attack pensions plans that are frankly, you know, a major factor in this, in the city's fiscal picture. How does that, what's your take on that right now? And in light of, I guess, we're kind of merging here into the COVID-19 crisis and how that's impacting the city. What can Providence do right now to kind of get out of this jam, given everything that's happening, the school turnaround plan, everything that's kind of in motion all at once here?
Yeah. So, so when it comes to the COVID-19 and the budget, um, one of the things that, that the Providence City Council, um, in the finance chair, the finance committee has been working really hard to make sure that we identify areas in the budget that we could potentially cut. Because the budget that was sent to us, that the administration put together, the mayor sent us a budget, um, that was very similar to last year's budget. There was not cut in there. There are some new positions that have been added. And right now, due to the pandemic, and also, um, and due to the financial situation which, which we are right now, uh, we know that many of those revenues that we were projecting are not going to materialize. So what we just did right now is we passed a levy to make sure that the city continues to have a cash flow, to make sure that the tax bills are sent out on time. And we did this because we know for sure that we're not planning on raising taxes. That's not, that's not part of our plan for this year. So that's why we're so comfortable with passing the levy and letting that part of the process to, to move forward. What we're doing right now, um, the finance committee, the finance chairman is scheduling meeting with every council member to hear from them about what are their priorities and what are the areas, because it's going to be painful to cut a budget. It's a painful process. So we want to make sure that every council member is able to have an input in this process. What are the areas that they see as, um, potential cuts? And what are the areas that they feel that we should not even consider touching this area? So we want to hear that. So that's the process that the chairman, Iglesias, is going through right now. When it comes to, when it comes to the decision from the Supreme Court, actually, that is devastating. That was a blow to the city right now. Basically, what the decision is saying is that the city cannot legislate pension changes. And, um, in, in order to do any changes, it has to be done voluntarily by the workers. Um, that is tough, because we know that the city of Providence has granted in the past some colas that we're not able to afford. Um, my hope is that the employees of the city of Providence realize that it's in their best interest to make sure that the city is successful, that we don't have to file for bankruptcy, that it's, it's in their best interest to understand that we have to come together and, and agree on how we move forward. Because also, we want to make sure that they, there is still a pension available for the current employees. So, and in order for that to happen, we will have to make a lot of changes.
Yeah, there's really no other way to do it. At some point down the line, you would figure that, let's say, five, 10 years from now even, another mayor could come along and say, hey, look, you know, um, in fact, I talked to someone that's, that's a well-respected journalist that you and I both know well, that, um, kind of indicated that, look, you know, down the line, another mayor could make other demands that could make it a, let's say, tough choice or an easier choice now for a pensioner to make a change on, from their position. So, you know, the long story short is that Providence is, you know, it's not a pretty fiscal picture, and it's going to be difficult to navigate. And you've got to be creative and somewhat forgiving if you're going to get out of this jam.
And we have to be clear about, um, the assumptions that we have for the pensions. Besides the problem of the colas, we have the problem that our, our some rate of return is at eight percent. And we have not been getting eight percent. Um, like, maybe we get a six, six and a half. So that's something else that is adding to the problem and making the, this even a compounded and bigger issue for the pensions. So we know that we need to have a serious conversation, uh, the electro officials of the city of Providence and also the residents of the city of Providence and the, uh, the employees of the city of Providence. If we, we, if we want to see the city to be successful, we all have to come to the table understanding that there has to be, uh, changes need to happen. Um, we need to understand that we're not able to provide the same level of benefits that we used to provide before when it comes to the pensions. We cannot continue to, to provide, um, promise. Because what we're doing right now, we're promising up that there's going to be a pension at the end. And we cannot guarantee that that's going to happen. So I think it's time for us to have a realistic conversation about what we're able to afford and what we're able to promise. And honestly, I believe it's in the best interest of the employees also to have this conversation, because they don't want to be planning on something that is not going to be there when they need it. So, uh, it has to be a tough conversation that we need to have, but it has to be a, a conversation with everyone at the table.
Do you have a gut instinct on whether or not that's likely to happen anytime soon? That there'll be a, a roundtable or a Zoom meeting, whatever it ends up being, where there's give and take? Do you get the feeling that it's realistic?
I, I hope that we are moving to that stage in which people realize that this needs to happen. Right now, actually, we're waiting for the, um, the police contract, right? Uh, then, uh, the administration is negotiating their contract with the FOP. Uh, we passed the firefighter contract, which was for five years. And I have to say, Chairman Iglesias has been asking for quite some time that the new contracts should not be having the same level of benefits and that there should be some changes on it, especially when it comes to the pensions. And, and the chairman has been asking for, um, the administration to make changes to the pensions moving forward for the new employees. We don't want to go back and change the promises that we made to the employees in the past. But what we want to make sure is that whatever promises we're making right now, we're able to fulfill our commitment.
Right, that they're sustainable. Shifting to, um, kind of shifting back to where we started in this broad conversation, that, you know, one thing that's come up is the movement to, it's being categorized as defund the police, reallocate resources. There was a, a large, I guess, I don't know the number, but I believe it was close to 200 folks that came out to testify at a finance committee meeting on the notion of, of defunding the police. Where does that fit in your picture? Do you think that that's a realistic approach? Obviously, the Fraternal Order of Police voted no confidence in Mayor Lorsa and, and the council. So it's, you know, there is some friction there. But is there a way to kind of get out of that, that in a, in a productive way?
So, um, I think we're being, being realistic. It's not like we're, it's not likely that we're going to defund the police completely this year and replace it with something else, because we don't have that something else. I think right now, we are at the beginning of that discussion of what could it be? Um, I think that there's going to be some changes that are going to be proposed, um, for this time around. Chairman Iglesias already proposed, um, looking at a model from another city, um, in which, um, we have a response team to quality of life issues that is not necessarily an armed police officer. And I'm all for it. I actually was looking into all the alternatives myself, whether we could get more of the responses to happen through the fire department, uh, through the, um, EMTs, uh, for most of the, some of the quality of life responses in which we're sending the police to everything for things that they are not, uh, prepared to handle. So I think we need to start shifting this, but it's not going to happen overnight. I think this is going to be a process that we have to start making small changes. Um, how much is going to be this year? I cannot tell you right now. We're still going through the process of discovering the budget and see where we can cut. Uh, I believe that this year, not just only the police, I think everything is going to get cut this year. You're going to see cuts at every single department, not just the police. So, uh, but we have to remember that right now, the police is 90 million of this budget. It's 90 million of the police, and 91% of that goes to personnel. So we've got to be honest about this conversation. Are we going to talk, are we talking about cutting personnel in the police department? Or are we talking about reallocating some of the personnel into a different type of work? So we're open to the discussion. And we had four hours, a four-hour meeting with the community member and members and the FOP, in which each one, uh, presented their, their case. And also the leadership of the police department, the chief and the commissioner were there. We had nine hours of, um, public hearing for the, um, for the budget, in which most of the feedback that we got was from the public that wanted us to, um, to defund the police. So what I really hope is that the police department understands that, and the members of the police department and their, um, their union, the leadership union, that it is in their best interest to be part of the discussion. They need to be at the table and having part of this conversation in, in looking for ways in which we can implement change. Because there is a huge demand, there is, there is a huge cry out there in the community for change. And I believe that the police officers, the FOP, needs to be part of the conversation, because if not, change is going to happen without them.
Right. It doesn't seem like there's any option for no change. That's, that's, that's off the table. So it's kind of like, all right, who's, who's at the table? Who's going to walk away, um, you know, with, with the most bitter pill to swallow? And you would think that the folks in the FOP and the folks in the community, frankly, that are calling for this, you know, there has to be some sort of mutual agreement. Otherwise, it's going to stagnate and not really go anywhere. Um, well, it may go somewhere, but no one will be particularly satisfied potentially. Hey, B-Town listeners. Discover daily digital content on your favorite social channels, on Instagram, @BartholomewTownPodcast, on Facebook. You can join the Bartholomew Town Podcast group. And on Twitter, it's me, @BillBartholomew. Okay, back to our conversation with Providence City Council President Sabina Matos. You were one of the first, if not the first, um, political leaders to come out and strongly condemn, in fact, call for the removal of Providence plantations from the state of Rhode Island's name. And, you know, look, I don't, I, I, this is one issue. I can't wrap my head around why anybody would possibly want to hold on to that. You know, who, who out there, you know, the, the idea, all right, you're erasing history, or oh, it's just a farm, or whatever, you know, all these kind of trivial type of, of messages. Um, the fact of matter is that it's a deeply offensive term for a variety of reasons, starting with, first of all, indigenous folks who were enslaved and worked on those farms that everyone has been advocating for. And then just the word connotation itself. And also just, why, why does Rhode Island, um, you know, as we try to present ourselves to the world, you know, why would anybody want to attach that to our state name, even from just a purely economic level? So your take on Providence plantations, which has now been struck from the executive branch and, uh, you know, certainly the mayor striking it from Providence documents, but what do you think about it?
So honestly, I just want to clarify that, uh, I was, I'm not the first to, I was not the first to call for this. There was a huge movement, uh, probably 10 years ago or so.
Sure, yeah.
To, to the same thing. And, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Mary Kay Harris, who's the, um, the premier deputy leader, uh, for the city council, she was one of the leading voices, um, calling for this. Representative Joanne Maida was fighting for this. They, it made it all the way to the ballot, but unfortunately, it was not approved. Um, I kind of, of this wave, I felt that this is the time to bring back this discussion. And that's why I introduced, um, the resolution of the Providence City Council. I honestly believe that having the word plantation in our name of the state of Rhode Island just brings this negative connotation to it. Someone that comes from outside and, um, outside Rhode Island and comes here and hear that this is the name of the state, the first thing that they think is a negative thought. They're not thinking about the argument that everyone is making of like, oh, this has nothing to do with, um, this labor. It has nothing to do with the plantations of the south, of the south. But let me tell you, that is the first thing that comes to people's minds when they hear that. And besides that, why do we need such a long name?
Yeah.
Rhode Island is long enough already, you know? So if, if, if people don't want to hear the other argument, which is more the brush and all, and the more caring about our community and the members of our community, let's not have the conversation about why do we need such a long name? There's not need for it. Uh, but we have to remove the word plantation, because it just brings hurt to many, uh, people here in the state of Rhode Island. And we have to be aware of that. And we need to make sure that we do our part to help our community heal and help our state and our nation heal.
No doubt about it. On a similar, of a similar nature is the Christopher Columbus statue, which was removed. We're taping on Thursday. This will air on Tuesday. So it's now been a week and a half or so since the statue was removed. What a powerful scene with that thing coming out, hundreds of people cheering and, and some really emotional people around, standing around the statue. Um, where should that end up? Is that appropriate to put up in the city anywhere else? Should it go in a museum? What, how does that work from your perspective?
So, so I, I probably, you know, I'm an immigrant from Black Dominican, from the Dominican Republic. So this conversation about the topic of Christopher Columbus is really hit home for me.
Yeah.
I understand, um, and I have to tell you, from the history that I learned in the Dominican Republic, it was very pro Columbus, right? Um, I think probably within this, maybe the last two decades is when people have been waking up to the older side of, of history, because, um, we have been listening only to one side. Um, I understand the sentiment that the people from the neighborhood, um, and the L1 neighborhood have with the statue and the, the part about the Gorham Manufacturing Company that donated the statue and all that. I understand the feelings that they have with the attachment to it. At the same time, we have to remember that there is a large number of the, um, neighbors that live in that neighborhood around the South Providence and the West End are black and brown, in many cases immigrants that come from the country that were the first one to deal with the colonization. Right now, I, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the, the neighbors that want to preserve the history and their connection to, to the statue. But at the same time, we have to be aware of the hurt feelings that come, uh, for the residents of that area. Right now, I'm glad that the statue has been removed. Um, looking forward to the process that's going to happen to determine where it goes. Uh, one of the things that I, that I regret about this whole thing is that it's, it's being portrayed as an anti-Italian, uh, sentiment. And it's not about that. Um, and I wish there was not that attachment, um, to the statue and the Italian-American contributions. Because there is something that we have to remember. For the Italian-Americans, they feel that this is, um, they went to a period of time in which, not just in the state, but in this country, they were discriminated against. And having, um, statues of, of, of individuals that are Italian descendants, to them is showing their pride and showing that we are recognized, our contributions are valued. And we have to be careful that in this discussion, it's not, it's not seen as an anti-Italian sentiment, because it's not that. We cannot erase the many, many contributions that Italian-American has made to this country and especially to the state, you know? So I, we need to find ways how we separate both conversations. One thing doesn't equal the other.
I agree. Even just the other day, we were sitting around here and a few of us were having a conversation. It was like, what if, what if we had more of a heritage, you know, Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, although I certainly think that we should be lifting up the voices of indigenous peoples year-round, 365 days a year. But there's got to be a compromise as well to play into the, the concerns of the Italian, um, the Italo community here in, in the city and the state, you know, maybe it's more of a heritage, you know, hey, everyone, check You know, hey, everyone, check out where I'm, where I'm from in one day. I don't know what it is. But it's silly to think that this, the statue is, you know, trying to, you know, target Federal Hill and say, all right, you guys are now, we, we don't want your input anymore, you know, or Italians at large, whatever it is, it really is a deeper conversation, so.
Yes, and it's a deeper conversation, but I'm, I believe that there are areas that that are known, that Rhode Island, Providence is known throughout the country because of the Italians presence, like Federal Hill. And I'm a big fan of keeping those traditions and keeping those areas as a symbol of the Italian heritage and Italian contribution. And not everyone agrees with that, but I think that it's important for the city of Providence, it's important for the state and even more important for the, all the individuals of Italian descent that are part of our city and our state.
I couldn't agree more. All right, last minute or so here. COVID-19 is certainly not over. We're seeing the spikes all over the Sun Belt. We're seeing it, apparently, the Navy ship is heading, you know, the hospital ship is heading to Arizona or heading, heading to the West Coast for, you know, I don't know, it just seems like we're in a, we're in a tough spot here. Rhode Island fortunately has dialed it in. But at the same time, Providence has been, particularly certain zip codes has been the most affected by this other than the broad nursing home population. You know, do you get the sense that we have COVID dialed in and placed to your satisfaction as Providence City Council President right now here in July? And more importantly, are we prepared for what seems like an inevitable second wave that's going to come at some point?
So I have to say, we are very fortunate that the Governor Raimondo took the steps she took in order to prevent a wider spread of COVID in Rhode Island. But also, I have to, and we have to understand that in areas like in Providence, the Otten Island zip code, which is my zip code where I live and and the neighborhoods that I represent. And also, I can say all the cities, also like Central Falls, in which there is a large population of either black or Latinos, immigrant community that has been affected big time. I think that in, and the governor has said this herself, it hasn't been perfect, the response hasn't been perfect, but we have been learning every day and we have making improvements. In the city council, what we have done is we have been able to we ensure that we can send funding to clinics, local clinics, to make sure that we increase the testing capacity within the neighborhood, especially the ones that were being affected greatly. We have been, another thing that we have done is direct funding to some of the local organizations that are working to respond, to assist the to assist the individuals that either are COVID positive or a member of the family is and trying to help them be able to provide for their food, assist them with with their daily expenses. We have been working with organizations like High Ground International, with the Guatemala Center in New England, with the Center for Southeast Asians. And one of the things that we're doing with them, of several things, but one that that I find to be very important is making sure that they're able to provide a food that is culturally appropriate to the community. Sometimes people say, well, well, but the food bank has food. But someone, an immigrant from Africa may not eat the food that is being provided, that is normally found in their food pantry, right? But you have an organization, the High Ground International, that is providing food that is what they need. Because if if they don't get access to the food that they need, they're not going to stay in quarantine. They're just going to, the quarantine, they're going to go out and and try to find the food that they want. So that's why it's so important, this this process. The same is with the Center for Southeast Asians. They're providing culturally appropriate food also for the community. So we're trying to do whatever we can to assist in this pandemic, understanding that this is going to be with us for a long time and try our best to continue to communicate. We have done PSA in different languages to make sure that the community understands how to take care of themselves and their family and also understand how serious it is, this COVID-19 thing.
Absolutely. And that's something that Omar Bah, I remember, a few months ago, brought up Refugee Dream Center that, look, you know, the, the food aspect of this from a practical and from a, just from a comfort standpoint, needs to be brought to the the center of the equity conversation with many other things, like testing, transportation, you know, translation services, all of that. But it does seem like we've dialed it in here as a state in those areas and we didn't have it all together. That's for sure. We didn't have it all together at the, get out of the gate for this, this crisis. Now we do a lot more.
Yeah. And I don't think anyone could have had everything figured out at the beginning. This is new. This is new, you know? And, and, and at the same time, we need the voices pushing and pushing us as elected officials when, and let us know when we're not meeting their expectation and when we're not doing enough, you know? That is important to have that. I always say, I don't know what I'm doing wrong if someone doesn't tell me about it, right? I may be going around thinking that I'm doing the right thing. So I think that that applies to every elected official and to every government official. So it's important for us to hear back from the community and to hear what they're telling us, where we're not doing enough. And just as long as we're willing to listen and willing to make the corrections when we're not doing something right and making improvement, that's what it counts.
Providence Council President Sabina Matos, ladies and gentlemen, always an extreme pleasure. And have a great, yeah, have a great weekend and enjoy the summer to the max weekend. Hopefully, the fireworks aren't keeping you up at night.
It has been really quiet after that press conference. I mean, the Ryan worked on that with the police. Actually, it has been, it has been improving. But we all have been suffering for, from the fireworks this year because people are home and they want entertainment. So, but we're doing our best to address that. But thank you for the invitation and I always have a pleasure to come and have a conversation with you. You helped me like think about everything in the big picture and talk about everything at once. I just go from one meeting to the next about different topics. So this was really good.
I'm glad to hear.
This is the Bartholomew Town Podcast.
Check out B-Town's live streams of events in Rhode Island on IG and Facebook, like the recent removal of the Christopher Columbus statue in Providence or Governor Raimondo's daily COVID-19 press conferences. Your search is Bartholomew Town on your favorite social media channel or simply head over to btown.stream.
At Health Source RI for employers, we provide access to health insurance to more than 1,100 local businesses and nonprofits. And 96% of them renew through us every year. Maybe it's our choice of 19 different health plans, our 10 years of customizing solutions, or our one local team of dedicated experts helping employers find quality health insurance. See how our numbers stack up for you. Learn more at healthsourceri.com/employers.